Greetings, everyone. Welcome. I'm Dr. Michelle Anthony, President of the League of Women Voters, Wilkes-Barre area. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to welcome you to tonight's forum for Luzerne County Council. This event is being recorded in its entirety by Service Electric Television and will be broadcast and then posted on YouTube. No part of this recording may be used or distributed by any person, candidate, campaign, or political group for any purpose whatsoever. Candidates may provide a link on their websites to the full YouTube video. Thank you to the candidates for agreeing to meet with us tonight to share their thoughts and positions on a variety of issues that face the county council. Most importantly, audience, thank you for being here. You are the reason we are doing this forum. We are hoping that the information that you glean from tonight will assist you in making informed voting decisions on Election Day or on your mail-in ballot. Our moderator this evening, Dr. Christine Mellon, teaches Communication Studies and is Director of Speech and Debate at Wilkes University. We are thankful for her willingness to share her expertise and professionalism with us this evening. Dr. Mellon will now briefly review the format for tonight's meeting. Everyone, Dr. Mellon.
Thank you, Michelle. So I'd like to begin with a few points of information. The order in which candidates will speak was determined by a draw. The order in which questions are asked will be rotated so that the first question will be asked of the candidate who went second in the opening statement, and so on. Candidates will each be given a one-minute period to introduce themselves and give an opening statement. Each candidate will be given a one-minute period for a closing statement at the end of the forum. Questions for the candidates will be selected from a list submitted by the League Board. The candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question. We ask that you hold any applause until the end of the forum after the closing statements. So now we'll begin. So to begin the opening statements, we will start with Harry Haas, candidate Haas.
And one minute, you said, Chris? One minute, great. Thank you, League of Women Voters members. Thanks for having all of us. On behalf of everybody, I'm sure I'll just say the same thing. This is always fun. My name's Harry Haas. I have done this before. I am a veteran of county council. I served for three terms for 10 years, and I'm really confident that I can start, if elected, on day one, hit the ground rolling, and pick up the pace. There's a lot of issues facing county government that we have here during these crazy times and these interesting times. Chinese curses that may you live in interesting times, so we're certainly there. But I look at this as a blessing. It's a chance to give back to my community. County council members serve as a part-time basis, and I'm able to spend time with my family. I'm married with two children. We live in Kingston, right across the river, and I get to do a job I love. I teach middle school ancient history in the Dallas School District. I'm very blessed. So thank you for hosting us again. I'm happy to be here.
Candidate Stevenson, one minute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Stevenson. For those of you who don't know me, I am a lifelong resident of Luzerne County. I'm also a first-generation Jamaican-American. And like all of you in this room, I am qualified to speak on and have discussions about how we shape our community. And I'm very excited. My educational background is in interpersonal communications, English Lit, Sec Ed, and I'll be graduating with a master's in educational leadership this December. A lot of my focus is in social justice. I live a life dedicated to social justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'm very passionate about empowering the voices of others in this room. And I'm extremely excited to be the first Black woman to ever run for Luzerne County Council and to be a diverse representation for Luzerne County residents. Thank you.
Candidate Sabatino.
Good evening, and thank you for hosting us here tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting this all together. My name is Jimmy Sabatino. I was born in Hazelton. My grandparents and parents came here from Italy in 1975 and opened up Vesuvio's Pizzeria. My siblings and I have since brought it across the county to have three locations in Hazelton, Drums, and right here in Wilkes-Barre. I feel like my strength is I'm a small business owner, and I bring that perspective to the county council, and that I'm also a first-generation American. My mom, Sophia, is sitting right over there. She came here when she was 15. And we need diverse perspectives. We need different voices than what we have on the county council right now, and I feel like I could bring those voices to the county council and bring a unique perspective to solve everyday problems for people. Thank you.
Candidate Velez.
Good evening. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting. My name is Mary Ann Velez. I am from Durie Burrow. For the last three years, I have run a successful nonprofit here in Luzerne County. I am president and CEO of a local nonprofit named Una. To date, we have served 21,000 families here in Luzerne County. I believe my leadership, my capabilities, will help strengthen the current county council. I can bring fresh perspective, new ideas, and common sense back to the table to help move Luzerne County forward. Tonight, I hope to engage with the audience and prove to the audience and those at home watching that I am experienced and I am ready to serve as your next county councilwoman. Thank you.
Candidate Mitchell.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Thank to the League for hosting this. My name's Matthew Mitchell. I'm currently sitting on Luzerne County Council. I was appointed in June of 2022 to fill a vacancy by Mr. Robert Schnee from Hazelton. This is my first run for public office. I'm from Kingston, Pennsylvania. I've lived there my entire life, actually just recently moved to Plains. I'm currently a geographic information systems coordinator at the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. Over the past year and a half, I've really enjoyed my time on council. I've been really blessed to have been appointed. I think we've done a lot of good stuff over the last year and a half with colleagues, especially the overall financial health of the county, and I hope that we can continue paying down our debt and keep the county moving forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Candidate Urban.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank the League for sponsoring this. Happy Halloween season. I am the so-called scary Stephen J. Urban residing in Kingston, formerly of Wilkes-Barre. I maintain four jobs, including a full-time IT job. My track record on county council is the following, which I'm now in my eighth year. This is my second first term. Been a strong advocate for the residents and taxpayers of Luzerne County and never voted or sponsored tax increase. Sponsored the removal of a $5 vehicle registration fee, which was successful. Sponsored an ordinance trying to bring back taxpayer relief through means of reviving a homestead exemption. Unfortunately, that failed. Originally sponsored a government study commission ordinance to review the deficiencies in our charter. That actually passed this week. And although I've never purchased or owned a firearm, I voted for a resolution back in May of 2021 to designate Luzerne County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Even through the adversity of having my house attacked on Sunday, August 20, 2023, at 6:00 a.m., with my living room window being smashed out by juvenile delinquents, my track record is clear. I'm here to protect the good citizens of Luzerne County.
Candidate Bryn Smith.
I'm Joanna Bryn Smith, and I'm running for Luzerne County Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Luzerne County Community College for hosting us tonight. I have been a lifelong Luzerne County resident and a lifelong public servant, both in my vocation and my avocation. In my avocation, I have spent all of my time serving the community. I've served on multiple boards, on varied boards throughout the community, in an attempt to make our community better, and that's what I would like to do on the Luzerne County Council. In my vocation and my work, I have worked only in public interest law. I've done public defense, and then I have moved on to working with victims of domestic violence, again, working within our community. As a lawyer who grew up Revolutionary War reenacting, the history of this country, the perseverance of the American people, and the importance of our democracy on a local level and a national stage is deeply ingrained in me, and I will serve Luzerne County with balance, with dignity, and with transparency.
Candidate Dombrowski.
Yes, good evening. I'm a Luzerne County resident since I was six years old, just about all my life, and I'm a Kings College graduate, class of 1982, county major and information systems major at that time. I've become president of my own business since 1993, and I consider finance to be my strong point. Since we have $164 million budget, I kind of feel that's pretty important to Luzerne County, to have that type of knowledge. I'm a resident of Dallas Township, and if I was elected, I'd like Luzerne County to stay strong financially. That's my top priority. Thank you.
Candidate Rothenbecker.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Michelle Rothenbecker. I grew up in Larksville with Colmbanks at the end of my street where I used to play. I spent a lot of time at my grandparents' house in Pike's Creek in the Back Mountain. I went to Wilkes University, and now I live in Bear Creek in the mountains. I know this county really well. I've lived in a lot of places and have a lot of experience with it, and I'm really passionate about helping the people of this county and also taking care of our beautiful landscapes here. And I am not just the candidate with the weird hair. I also happen to have a Master of Business Administration, leadership experience, experience as an executive, and experience managing multimillion-dollar budgets that I think will help me.
Tonight's first question will begin with candidate Stevenson. Do you support undertaking a new government study commission to assess Luzerne County's form of government? And if yes, what specifically do you think should be changed?
I always support an opportunity for assessment and to get accurate information to support our progress. However, I have to say that the county's charter has only been around for approximately 12 years. I don't believe that the council has had the opportunity to function under proper leadership. Leadership is what shapes the function of this system, right? It's whether we do well, it's how we do poorly. People are running and operating how we structure this in our daily community, right? So I say that we allow the charter to proceed under the leadership of people who can really impact and make a difference and make the system work as the charter is effectively.
Candidate Sabatino.
Well, the founding fathers felt that every 20 years we should review our constitution, and I think we should at least give it a couple more years to see if there's something that we could do to make it work as is before we actually bring it to a review or drastically change it. Would I like to see different changes? Of course. Everybody would. But we have not given this charter a full opportunity to operate, and I couldn't agree with candidate Stevenson more when we say "operate," but operate under the correct leadership. We need bright people with great ideas to make the charter work as is, and I think that this is a plain and simple power grab by those who are currently on the council to ensure that their goals are reached, and they do not have the best interests of the residents of Luzerne County at heart.
Candidate Velez.
I welcome the opportunity to sit down with fellow members of county council if I should be elected and take seat in 2024. I do support the study commission for several reasons. I believe that there should be a reduction in the amount of county council members that are currently seated. I believe that there are certain aspects of the county charter that should be reviewed and revised to make it make sense for where we are today in today's world. I would welcome the opportunity to further that discussion and collaborate with members of the study commission that are chosen so we could put forth the best ideas for the people of Luzerne County. And as I have canvassed throughout this election, the people of Luzerne County are in favor of a study commission and would like to see our current council as well as future council members effectively make those changes.
Candidate Mitchell.
Thank you. Yes, serving on council has given me a unique perspective as to how the charter functions on a daily basis and the powers that the council has versus the administration. I do feel that Home Rule has been effective for Luzerne County as a whole, especially in regards to our finances. The debt has been cut in more than half in just about 12 years. We were down to about $190 million in debt. Where we started is approximately $450 million. Home Rule also allowed us to remove a lot of the excessive political influence that was affecting our prior government on a daily basis. So there are certain parts of the charter that have been very good, and there are some areas that need some work. I did vote to introduce the study commission. I do believe it should be up to the voters to decide whether there should be a commission forum to implement any new changes to a charter or revert to a new form of government. Thank you.
Candidate Urban.
Yes, I do support a government study commission. I've been a proponent of it since the beginning. Being on council for now my eighth year, there are some deficiencies in the charter that need to be addressed, whether it be on the election board or having to look at the charter where we can vote on removing a DA, which we really can't because we're elected officials trying to remove a state official. So there are some deficiencies in the charter that need to be addressed. We will be retiring the debt by 2030. We need study commission members that are going to be chosen or actually elected by the public. We're looking at seven members that can run from the public, that could get elected to look at our form of government and recommend either we change the charter or revert back to a different form of government. So quite honestly, you know, it is dependent on the leaders. I think we have some very good leaders on council from the past and present here that can actually facilitate that. We understand the county government, and we know where we want to take it in the future.
Candidate Bryn Smith.
I also always welcome an opportunity to self-reflect and truly think about where we're going and how it's been working. However, the charter, we should not forget, was written by a group of people who lived and loved Luzerne County. They lived here, and they understood it, and they understood its people. Home Rule has worked, especially given the financial issues that we had seen under the commissioners, and we can't forget that nothing will ever make everyone happy. There are always going to have to be compromises. There's been a big question about the number of people on council. I don't think that 11 people is too large of a number to represent the upwards of 330,000 people we have in this county. I'd like to allow it to be with a council that is willing to work together as a team and put the best interests of Luzerne County forward and first before we change things.
Candidate Dombrowski.
Yeah, I don't support that in any way, shape, or form, any type of government study commission at this time. We're only a few years away from when the charter was first created. At no time has anybody ever said, that I've ever heard, on council their specific complaints about any specific section until maybe a few seconds ago, either Mr. Mitchell or Mr. Urban might have made one specific complaint. That's the first time I've heard anything in one year about anything specifically. Really, if we want to be transparent, we have to state in front of the public at a council meeting, these are the problems we have with the charter. This is the way we think it should be. Discuss it amongst themselves in public and allow public comment. That's the proper way to do it. To do it any other way is a backstabbing, stored away. It has no chance of working. It never did as a three-commissioned system. If there's one possibility going back to that, that was a total and complete failure for 50 years. You can't even think of allowing that to go back to that again. That's one option within there.
Candidate Rothenbecker.
I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said here. It's always great to include people in the democratic process, and so electing a study commission of citizens could bring about a lot of positive change. But I also agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said, that this is not an old Home Rule charter. It has not been there for very long, and I don't think that it's fully implemented in the way that it's meant to be. If you read the charter, there are things in there that don't exist in our government today. And so I think that if we were to convene a government study, there should be clear objectives and missions for what that study would do, because we can't just keep having people, you know, dream up new governments, and then when they don't work, we blame the type of government instead of actually looking at how we're implementing it.
The next question will begin with candidate Sabatino.
Do I get to answer, Chris?
Sorry?
Could I address that question?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Candidate Haas.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess you could have skipped me because my opinion doesn't matter because the council's already approved it. It's going to be on the ballot for the study commission. But I do think that we look at some deficiencies in the government. The Solicitor has an awful lot of power. The Office of Law, there's been some inconsistencies there, and we all know what's been happening with the Board of Election, with the conflicting information, with the Board and the Bureau. So I'd like to see some clarity on that if, in fact, the voters approve a study commission. What I do really like about Home Rule, I like the 11-member format at large because they get to represent the entire county, and I like the fact that we've gone away with parochialism. I'm really, my big fear if we implement a study commission and people sit down, they're going to turn it back into districts, they're going to have different power plays, and we're going to see the old form of government where it really comes down to a few people controlling everything. We really don't want that. The people that made this whole form of government want to diversify the power to prevent against corruption. Thank you.
Candidate Sabatino. As the legislative body, what must council do to improve our county government, and should ensuring pay equity between men and women be a priority?
Well, I'll answer the second question first, and unequivocally, pay equity is a top priority for those of us that seem to be running together on things. We believe that everybody should be paid a living wage and that they should have the opportunity to work in government and provide a living wage for themselves and their families. Part of the problem we have today is we are not paying our 911 staff adequately. We are not paying our children and youth services adequately, and we are not taking the opportunity to give these people a living wage so that they can, like, grow in these positions and become better at their jobs and learn institutionally what needs to be done to do these jobs correctly, because they take the job and then they have to take a different job because they can't support their family. So we have a lot of turnover in certain offices like 911 and Children and Youth and the Elections Bureau, which might be part of the problems that Mr. Haas was talking about. You know, we are not paying people adequately, so thank you.
Candidate Velez.
I second Mr. Sabatino's comment. I do believe in pay equality. I believe those who are employed by here through Luzerne County deserve a livable wage. I have reviewed several budgets, whether it's the Police Department, CYS, 911 operators. We are underpaid. If you look at the national pay scale, Luzerne County falls pretty close to bottom of the line. It's difficult for our families to remain here in Luzerne County because they do not receive adequate wages. We witness our college students leaving in droves because they cannot remain in this area because they do not receive competitive salaries compared to some of our neighboring counties. So I would support pay equality straight across the board, and I would love the opportunity to sit down with various department heads to look at their budgets and see how we could implement pay increases for their departments.
Candidate Mitchell.
Can you repeat the first half of the question, please?
As the legislative body, what must council do to improve our county government?
So council has the ability to introduce quality-of-life ordinances. Our primary responsibilities are passing a budget, hiring a manager, and ensuring that the county government is functioning properly. Recently, I introduced, I will be introducing, we discussed at our work session on Tuesday, an ordinance to establish a hotline for blighted property and problem landlords. It's an issue that we see a lot of across the county. So there's small things that we can do on council that can make a big impact and just help our local municipalities out. Most of those issues do fall on the municipalities, so the county can be a resource for our local municipalities, which we have 76 of in Luzerne County. And yes, I do believe in equal pay for men and women.
Candidate Urban.
I can tell you that on county council, we all get equal pay. It's $8,000 a year. There is no disparity there. Many of the people that work in the county are unionized, so they have union contracts. That is equal pay. It's not gender-specific whatsoever. We've increased the pay numerous times over the last few years. As new contracts have come up, we voted on significant increases for 911 and for Children and Youth and for other departments. Those are all union contracts, so there are no differences between, we don't even look at gender as being an issue within the county when it comes to pay. Everybody gets treated equally, no matter who you are, what you believe in. This council has always been fair, and quite honestly, you know, I take issue with some of what some of the people here at the table are saying because we've been very fair. They are, there are very much, many people that make a livable wage that is above $65,000 or $100,000 a year, so I think that's livable.
Candidate Bryn Smith.
First, I'd like to answer the second part of the question. Yes, I am absolutely for equal pay. That's the end of that. But for the rest of how we can get the government to function better, not everyone knows, but I worked at the county for almost a decade. I lived the problems in the county every single day, and what Mr. Urban said about so many people making over $65,000 is absolutely not true. When I worked there, I would often think, I don't know how so many of these people put food on the table. I lived it. I saw it. There's a leadership problem in the county. A lot of the leadership is very focused on, I'm the boss, do what I said because I said it, not, I'm in charge, how can I help you get your work done? And that is a huge change. We need to make sure that our workers are treated better as well. We need to have a better working environment, a less toxic environment, along with living wages, and there are plenty of ways to do that, and that would be to go through the budget, as candidate Velez mentioned.
Candidate Dombrowski.
Yeah, I think the most important thing, as I mentioned earlier, was we have to be financially strong as a county. We were extremely weak in 2010, one of the worst-managed counties probably in the whole United States. We owe $466 million. We were just about ready to declare bankruptcy of some sort, whatever sort it would be for a government, local government, and we went from that, once we turned to Home Rule, to now we owe $197 at the end of this year. We'll own the 160s next year. We'll have a debt-to-equity ratio next year of 164, and income around 164, 165 in debt. There's nobody, no, you cannot do better than that. That's what you have to do, continue to pay down on that till the year 2030, pay the debt off in the spring of 2030, and I think at that point, any problems with roads and bridges as we go along that, as long as we stay strong, we can take care of it. If we're weak financially, it just multiplies all the other problems by 1,000. Pay equity, as Mr. Urban said, will always be important, and we pretty much have it right now.
Candidate Rothenbecker.
I think that one of the things that the county really needs to do is lead by example. As the county government, they're setting the tone for the rest of the county. And so how can we attract high-paying employers and say, do as I say, not as I do, and pay a low wage? It's not just about a livable wage, it's about a competitive wage, and we need to pay a competitive wage in order to attract top talent, retain those people so we don't have the rate of turnover, and fill the, you know, many staffing shortages that we have, especially in the 911 call center. One of the ways to do that is to modernize salaries and make sure that people can afford to live in today's world, and part of that is pay equity. We need to make sure that men and women are paid equally so that we are attracting both talented men and talented women.
Can I respectfully ask the audience, please, to silence or turn off all cell phones? The next question will be, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, candidate Haas. I got distracted.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Yeah, pay equity is a non-issue in the public sector because everybody gets paid equally. It's a non-issue. This comes up all the time. It's not a thing in the private sector, that's a different story, but we're talking about Luzerne County. And there was a few years ago, we were talking about road and bridges, and people were getting bad reports, and we found out there were 20 positions on paper, there were seven positions filled. So I said, why don't we combine positions? We'll have 10 positions. Perhaps we can double the salary, keep that Perhaps we can double the salary, keep that good talent that we have. It got, I got fiery very quickly. And one of my council members said, you can't do that, you're talking about union jobs, you can't do that. And I said, with all due respect, people are not filling these jobs because you can't live on $17. Now, I think, I think it was even lower than that at the time. So absolutely, we need to take a look at some salaries for some of our positions. We must understand, we're still in old paradigm, that when Luzerne County was very politicized, these were patronage jobs. So these were extra jobs, somebody's spouse got the job, they picked it up. We're in a different time now where this, this in many cases are people's full-time jobs. So it is certainly a question we can look at. I'm happy to do that.
Candidate Stevenson.
I have to disagree with Harry Haas. As a Black woman in America, I can surely tell you that pay inequality has certainly impacted my life. So yes, I absolutely agree with equal pay. And I believe that all residents of Luzerne County deserve to have their basic needs met by having the wage to live. Honestly, I think that the function of our county being able to improve that is how we lead and how we decide to structure, right? We need to put the humanity of our neighbors back into the forefront of every conversation we're having about policy, about ordinances, about how we decide to impact our community through service, through jobs, through work, through pay.
The next question will begin with candidate Velez. How can the county reduce vacancies and improve retention for staff positions, particularly in children and youth, 911, and the election board? And since we've already discussed pay equity, could we look at some remarks regarding training, benefits, and hiring practices?
Absolutely. I believe my experience as a nonprofit leader gives me the capability to review someone's resume and determine if they're the best fit for the job. I truly believe that when we are looking at children and youth, one of the most crucial agencies we have here in Luzerne County, 911, extremely demanding. Just to name two of the ones that you had mentioned. We need to ensure that these departments, these agencies are properly funded so they could then properly train oncoming staff, continue training throughout the year to ensure that they have every tool and skill at their disposal to properly do their job and provide them with a competitive wage. I could not run my nonprofit if I did not have qualified, trained individuals at every department. And that is how this county should run. We need to look at those resumes. We need to ensure our staff are qualified to do the job and properly trained.
Candidate Mitchell.
Yes, so over the past year, and especially since manager Croco-Mo took over, council and administration are talking about rightsizing across the entire county workforce. There are issues that have been greatly improved, such as, maybe Mr. Urban said, we approved several new union contracts that greatly increased wages. And 911, for example, it has been turning around slowly. Now, that particular department is a fair, it's a very special department because it's so essential to public safety, but it is also, at the same time, extremely stressful to work under. It's very hard to keep people in those jobs. I did tour 911, and after seven years, the director told me that most of his employees do experience post-traumatic stress disorder. We have, where council has a, has a difficult job of balancing the workforce, trying to get a livable salary while also trying to maintain our healthy financial state. So when it comes to governing, it's very difficult, but we have been finding a good balance.
Candidate Urban.
There's probably a great misunderstanding with some of the individuals up here at this table today that council has a very limited role in this form of government. All we do is really hire a county manager, and that's through government, through a search committee, and we hire our clerk to county council. Those are the two individuals or the two departments that we can hire in. The rest is up to the county manager to hire good, qualified division heads. We are not involved in that process. The only part of that process that we do get involved is confirmation of that division head once the manager chooses he or she for that position. And they set the salary. So we don't really get a chance to look at those resumes that often. You know, I mean, if we ask for them, sometimes they don't give them to us. That's the way the county operates at times. We would have, I mean, there have been times where I've had to file a write-to-no request for information as a county council member. Now, since manager Croco-Mo has come back to this county, communications has gotten a lot better. I've had one-on-ones with her myself, and we're doing a better job at, you know, fielding questions and, you know, offering solutions.
Candidate Bryn Smith.
Working on the board of so many nonprofits, I am especially positioned to ensure and know how to train institutional knowledge. That's how you are able to keep a nonprofit functioning. And in order to do that, we do absolutely need to increase training. And that means that we need to keep institutional knowledge so that employees can train new employees. And in terms of retaining talent, especially for children and youth, consider children and youth and how dangerous that job is. I don't know how people are not screaming every day that our county says, you children and youth, you are in charge of the welfare and well-being of every single child in this entire county, but don't ask for appropriate pay for it, and don't ask for an appropriate budget for it. We absolutely need to reallocate some of our funds so that we can take care of these most vulnerable people in society so that 911 can take care of them and so children and youth can take care of them.
Candidate Dombrowski.
Yeah, I think that those two jobs are, out of all the departments, I think they have 39 departments in Luzerne County, I think those two are probably the most difficult mentally. I would agree with, some people probably do end up with PTSD as a result of being employed in those jobs for some years. But at the same time, too, they have some lifers, so to speak, in each department. And I really think the managers of those departments should go to the lifers, meaning the ones that have been there 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, and ask them, what do you like about this job? What do you find stressful about this job? How do you handle the difficulties of this job? And I don't think anybody's ever really done that, to be honest, you know? I think that's where you have to start. You have to start with people who are succeeding and doing successfully and have them sort of help the people who are struggling. Because that's kind of what's happening. But the pay part of it probably is on its way to being taken care of. But it's not only about pay, it's about mental toughness, too.
Candidate Rothenbecker.
Competitive pay is absolutely a part of it, but competitive compensation includes so much more than pay. It includes on-the-job training, benefits. It includes, you know, making sure that our people are taken care of if they are suffering from some sort of PTSD. And I'm a training and learning professional. Training is an entire discipline that is really complex. But one of the things about engaging training is making sure it sets people up for realistic expectations for the job. So if we do know a job is traumatic, that's something that needs to be prepared in the training. People need to make sure they are ready for that as well. So it is somewhat about mental toughness. But we also need to make sure that training is engaging and fair and fun and includes a diverse, a diverse pool of candidates so that everybody has the opportunity to get those jobs.
Candidate Haas.
Thank you. I very much support the rank-and-file of all Luzerne County staff. They're amazing people. They get a bad rap, the politics gets thrown from the top, and it clouds and muddies the water. That being said, children and youth workers, we're 80% funded by the state, but the civil, we have issues with the civil service right now in Pennsylvania. We have to also understand that our role in council, a lot of our operations are funded by the state. So unfortunately, counties often get the can that's kicked down the road. The state doesn't want to raise taxes, they don't want to send us money to fund a lot of our operations. So we had an issue with that under Governor Wolf many years ago. 911, we train our workers, we have exquisite staff, and then they leave for greener pastures. They become dispatchers in other places with the state police or neighboring counties. So yes, that is an issue, pay is an issue. We got about 45 years ago, we got the pay increase from 27 to 31.5. It's still not enough, but it's a step in the right direction. 911 is funded by surcharge tax on our cell phones that we use. Same thing with the, with the children and youth, it's a little underfunded. If the state could help us out, we could help manage operations a lot better and maintain our bottom line with supporting our staff financially. Thank you.
Candidate Stevenson.
Thank you. You know, it's very difficult, the people who are working in those departments are struggling and operating on the bare minimum. And for us to focus on the funding and the competitive wage is extremely important, but we also need to not make this an isolated situation. We are a community. There are many people who are qualified to utilize their knowledge in their everyday lives in their communities. Yes, we're on council, and yes, we don't have a direct impact on how they operate in those departments. But as a community and a council, we should be able to build the relationships between us and those departments to seek functionality, to seek other resources that are here in the county that aren't being utilized, to help those, the training for 911, to help childcare and staffing services. We are here and we can operate and do that if we build the relationships and the collaborations across these departments and with council. Let's not limit ourselves and restrict us to just these positions because a lot of you have the skills that could really impact the decision-making that happen in those spaces.
Candidate Sabatino.
Stevenson is a tough act to follow. I couldn't agree with her more. I think community building is the most important thing we can do to make sure that we take the stress off of our county workers in tough situations. But I would like to point out that the county council does control the most important thing that deals with this, these agencies. They control the budget. So they can adequately fund the budget by trimming the fat elsewhere and getting the resources to the departments that really, truly need them and need to hire the right people to train and they need to. We can approve the budget to give the right benefits, to attract intelligent and well-qualified people who know how to do these jobs and know how to train people. We control the perks. And with that, we can control how our staff is trained and how we can better the county.
Our next question will begin with candidate Mitchell. What is the biggest challenge facing the county and what would you do to address that challenge?
I believe the biggest issue facing the county right now is the opioid epidemic. We're losing thousands of young people to the scourge of this terrible, terrible disease every year. Council recently was awarded a $20, $25 million settlement. And we have certain initiatives that we're working on right now to address the opioid epidemic. A committee has been formed. We're working with Drug and Alcohol, the District Attorney's Office, and other human services departments than the prison to see what options are available, what we can use this money for. Other than that, I believe that, I spoke on blighted property. There are several issues that the county can address when it comes to blighted property, such as assisting our municipalities. Thank you.
Candidate Urban.
I would say one of the biggest challenges at the moment is trying to control the budget. I mean, there are a lot of good ideas here at the table. However, it all comes down to money, whether it be the opioid crisis or blighted property issue. It's all about money. I mean, to do what some people think they want to do will require probably an 8% tax increase year after year, if some of my candidate colleagues here wish to address some of the issues that they want to address. Like I said, council has a very limited role. We do appoint people on authorities' boards and commissions, we confirm division heads, we pass a budget, and we're in budget season right now. Those budgets come from the department heads and the division heads. And so we're taking their numbers that they're bringing to us, and they've massaged those numbers to basically give us to live off of. And we also have to think about the residents, the good residents that pay the bills, and we want to keep it as low as possible for them as well.
Candidate Bryn Smith.
The biggest challenge facing Luzerne County right now is that so many people are struggling. People who work at the county are struggling, people in this room, I'm sure, are struggling. And that's not just with wages, that's not just with pay, it's also with the opioid epidemic. That is connected to difficulty at home. It's with mental health issues and lack of mental health services. There are so many people who are struggling, and that does come down to money. And the county council still has not released the entirety of the American Rescue Funds. It is still sitting there. We are in 2023. If we could release those funds, we could so help our community and those who are struggling within it by finally releasing those funds. So I think the biggest problem right now is how to help our people who are struggling, our working families who are struggling, and to make sure that we fund the people who can help them and the services that can help them.
Candidate Dombrowski.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge facing Luzerne County is the roads and bridges. I've heard a couple might be. Not me, is it? No.
Stop hitting them.
Should I wait a second? Start over on the clock, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I think the biggest challenge facing Luzerne County is the roads and bridges. I've heard it from many different people over the years, and it never really seems to improve. Really don't have any history on that as to where a lot of these come from. I think, to be honest, you know, Dallas Borough, Dallas Township, just pulling them out of a hat might have turned some over to the county, Lower Demons Road in Dallas being one good example. And when it became too much a headache for them, they turned it over to the county. And there's really got to be a little bit of a, a little bit of a challenge to that when people try to turn their headache into our headache, you know, to become a county-wide headache. You know, it's not that simple as fixing the roads, fixing the bridges. Lower Demons Road has been paved paths, I mean, probably more than 1,000 times now. Never repaved, you know, but many other roads have been. So I think, you know, you have to be strong financially to do that, but you really need to pick out the five worst roads in Luzerne County that they own, the five worst bridges, and you have to start with there and say, what's in the budget? What's left over from the American Rescue Plan Funds? We're starting there.
Candidate Rothenbecker.
I think the biggest challenge facing this county is poverty. And I think that we've heard a lot of answers that speak to poverty. But, you know, poverty also leads to a lot of the problems that we're talking about. So it leads to lower tax revenue. And I think one of the ways that we can combat that is by making sure that some of the programs that help people are adequately funded, like whole-home repairs, but also making sure people are educated about those programs and that they know how to take advantage of them. That is something that I think that we don't always do, and we need to make sure that the county website makes sense to people and can be used. And that if people can't use the county website, that we are making sure that the public is educated about these programs and how to take advantage of them. The county website isn't fully accessible right now, and so I worry that people, especially those with disabilities, can't take, take advantage of all of those programs.
Candidate Haas.
Another issue is roads and bridges. Just like Mr. Dombrowski said, it is a severe issue. It's crippling us because some of these routes that are county roads are main thoroughfares for a lot of our communities. There's a lot in the Back Mountain, there's a lot in Mountop. They crisscross the whole county. And we have a skeleton crew in the road and bridge department. We talked about before about the lower wages. We've, we could have used a lot of those COVID funds that are now gone, by and large, to hit the roads and bridges, but that was, that was really not on the table. We need to make sure we leverage state and federal funds and grants to put tar back onto our roads instead of the potholes. It was always one of my number-one issues when I served on council. It came from about 100 years ago when the state wanted to get the counties out of the mud. And so how our government was organized, we had, we had a commissioner system, and a lot of patronage went into paving a lot of roads here. And so we have a legacy of that. We have a disproportionate amount of roads and bridges across the state. I think we own 25% of all roads and bridges that are owned by counties across Pennsylvania. It's a severe problem.
Candidate Stevenson.
I absolutely agree with Michelle Rothenbecker. Poverty is definitely the number-one issue in Luzerne County. There is no doubt about it. And more often than not, poverty is one thing that you, most people, don't want to pay attention to, but they like to consider it something that's draining their community. Instead, people in power, the people focused, people on council have the, have the privilege to address these issues. And when you don't think outside of yourself and you operate with privilege, you tend to ignore these problems. And that goes exactly to the way we allocate our budget. We are not operating in a way that allows us to take into consideration all areas of the county and including all of those people. The way we decide to spend money on council depends on all of us and our line of thinking, right? So are we supporting the people or are we not?
Candidate Sabatino.
I agree with Mr. Haas and Mr. Dombrowski that roads and bridges are a priority for us for the future. We need to use our liquid fuel tax money to bring those roads up to appropriate standards and turn them over to the local municipalities, who will then benefit from years of having liquid fuel tax money to fix other roads in those municipalities. A good majority of the roads are in the southern part of the county where I'm from, and we've turned over a few roads. turned over a few roads to, like, the county has turned over a few roads to Butler Township. And it's been a successful program. Butler has used that fuel tax money to fix other roads and bridges in Butler that the local municipality is responsible for. We need to expand that. We need to focus on getting the roads and bridges to people who are lower, not lower, but closer to the ground and closer to the people, so they can adequately take care of them and listen to what their local constituents are telling them.
Candidate Velez?
Yes, while I agree with many of the valid points fellow candidates have made this evening, I think they're missing the big picture. Our main problem here in Luzerne County is lack of proper funding. I've spent the last 24 months under federal and state agencies, learning about various funding opportunities we could bring into Luzerne County that would help repair our infrastructure, that would take care of the struggling families here in Luzerne County, increase socioeconomic revenue by increasing our small businesses, and as well as supporting clean environment. So there is ample funding opportunities, and I welcome the opportunity to sit down with my fellow county council members, if I am elected, to discuss those funding opportunities and how we can implement them into Luzerne County, so we can move this county forward as a whole for every resident.
All right, the next question will begin with candidate Urban. Do you believe that as an elected county council person, it is more important to hold on to your personal policy position at all times, or to negotiate to reach a decision that will pass council? And if you have an example, we'd appreciate it.
Quite honestly, I think, you know, my personal life really doesn't come into play when it comes to county council. It's really what is best for the people, the individuals that pay the bills. Quite honestly, you know, we're talking about a lot of programs here, and it's really about funding, money. To pave a road, it's about $1 million a mile. We have about $160 million budget. There's just not enough money in the pot to do all of that stuff. We have to do really a balancing act on county council. It's between the administration. It's between county council. It's about knowing where to get the money from, how we're going to get it. Quite honestly, with, let's go back to ARP. I mean, I had some personal differences with on how that was appropriated. I thought maybe we could use it for more public projects, like sewer projects, to maybe reduce the burden in the future on people from paying a higher sewer bill. But that was not the case. You know, I got outvoted, and we pretty much gave everybody a piece of funding that applied.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
The sad truth is, we've seen gridlock all over this nation from a local level, state level, national level, and it simply has to stop. It is more important to negotiate with your fellow electeds. And one of your responsibilities as an elected official is to work with your fellow elected officials in order to keep the government running, in order to make sure that the services for your people are available, in order to make sure that your government can collect its tax revenue. We have to elect people who are willing to work as a team. And frankly, we haven't seen a team on Luzerne County Council in quite a long time who is willing to work together. This November, we need to elect new county council people who are willing to work together as a team, who are willing to put Luzerne County residents and their interests above the interests of the personal council people.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, I, I think you always want to do what's best for the county. There's no, there's no second place there. You don't ever really do what's best for yourself. I mean, Luzerne County has a long history of people doing exactly that, especially under the three commissioner system was a complete and total failure. But what I'm saying is, that stuff, we're trying to get away from, but we have a long legacy of, that's the way Luzerne County's been forever. So we have to try to overcome that, but each person out of the 11 has to make their own decision that he want to do what's best for the county. And really, when you have an election now, the people who are voting should consider not only who's qualified, but they should consider who's more of a team player, as Attorney Smith said, and are you willing to do what's best for the county or not even think about that. You know, for me personally, I would always try to do what's best for the county. It's not a promise, just the way I am. I wouldn't even think about me. It has nothing, it's zero to do with me. Thank you.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
I believe if I'm elected, people will elect me based on what I stand for. And so I think it is important that I stay true to myself. However, I think that anybody who knows me would tell you that something that's really important to me is my ability to learn based on facts and my ability to make data-driven decisions. And so I think both of those things allow me, as, would allow me as an elected official to listen to the public, learn and change my mind if I needed to, debate respectfully with people who may not have the same opinions that I have, and come to a compromise that, as my colleague said, is best for the county.
Candidate Haas?
Absolutely. You know, I was elected three times to council, and I really feel that I earned the voters' trust because what I said in the campaign is what I followed through in action. And that's what the people want. They deserve that. They deserve to know where each candidate stands, and they need to follow through. Talk is very cheap in this outfit. I've certainly seen a lot of it in my years of service. So that being said, an example of a time where I worked with colleagues, when Home Rule started, it was wonderful. I had such cherished friends on there that were on the opposite side of the political fence from me, like Linda Howe, Elaine Curry, Rick Williams. A lot of you will remember those names. Wonderful, wonderful people. We did a lot of good. We resolved a lot of problems that the county had. And so on the local level, politics and the ideology really doesn't matter. It's all about paving the roads. It's about keeping the taxes low. It's about keeping the government working. So I really recall those times very fondly. I hope to be a part and bring that back if I'm elected again to this council. I think it's sorely missing. But I know we have these giveaway programs called K O Z's, Key and Opportunity Zones, that I will tell about you at a later time.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. Do you believe that as an elected county council person, it is more important to hold on to your personal policy position at all times, or to negotiate to reach a decision that will pass council? Candidate Stevenson? Yes, absolutely. If I am to get elected, I would love the opportunity to work with the other candidates to make sure that we are actively listening to the concerns of Luzerne County residents. People want to be heard, right? And when you are heard, your voice is empowered, and then you have a say. And then you feel like you can come forward and continue that as you begin to participate in democracy. I don't think any of us would be on this stage if we were here willing to only serve ourselves. I surely wouldn't be. I think it's very important to empower that people's voice and to make sure that we are operating in a team functionality to ensure that Luzerne County residents get exactly what they deserve, right? We can't say that, oh, we're not going to spend this money. And we can't say that we're going to, we can say that we're going to try our best not to raise taxes. But it's going to be a conversation. It's going to be a discussion. And that's how we should operate in a forum for council.
Candidate Sabatino?
Well, as a business owner who is in business with his siblings, keeping an open mind is one of the things I have to do all the time. You have to listen to everybody's perspective and make a very educated, data-driven analysis of it and take it to heart and really think about what you're doing. Because you're, what we do as elected officials doesn't just affect us. It affects everybody in the county. Similar to being in business, what we do as the sibling leaders affects not just us, it affects everybody who works for us. We have to be mindful of that, and we have to take that to heart. And the only way to do it is to keep an open mind and open ears and be willing to learn something new, as candidate Rothenbecker said. There's no personal opinion that I hold that is ever going to take precedence over the residents of Luzerne County.
Candidate Velez?
As a nonprofit leader, I should note, my organization is all volunteer. Not one of us take a salary. My motive for running for county council was not self-serving. It was to serve the community as best as I possibly could. The 21,000 families that approached my organization since 2020, it was not my personal opinion or my personal motives that helped those families. It was data-driven. It was with empathy and compassion and from lived experiences. I was able to execute and implement crucial programs here in Luzerne County that helped elevate those families out of those impoverished situations. And as a county council member, I will continue to utilize those methods with integrity and transparency, because my only motive is moving this county forward for every resident.
Candidate Mitchell?
Thank you. Since I've been appointed, I've tried to keep an independent mindset with every single vote that I've had. I've been successful on the successful side and unsuccessful side, but I've always done what I thought was best for the county. And I never had an issue with a vote that I, there are difficult votes that you have to take when you're governing, but you have to take them. That's part of governing. That's what the people expect you to do. And they also expect you to form a consensus and run, and run the government efficiently. That's what local government's about. It's just about running good local government, not about national issues. With less than we want is the county to look like Washington, DC. We just want it to look like a very successful, functional county. That's it.
For the next question, we will begin with candidate Bryn Smith. In the past few years, we all understand how crucial elections are. In assessing the 2022 election, the Luzerne County District Attorney's investigation noted that inexperience and staff turnovers led to a series of debacles by the Bureau of Elections. What can the council do to ensure that all county elections are efficient, accurate, and ethical?
First, we can hire a county manager who is able to take on those tasks. And I believe that we've done that. The staff turnovers are part of a question that we've already answered. We need to create a better environment for the staff in Luzerne County. They are underpaid and overworked. We know this. The staff turnover is so detrimental because we lose institutional knowledge. However, we do need staff who has experience and is able to handle the roles. We've had many issues with our elections, and it has not stopped since the shortage of paper. I believe that we need to bring in a consultant, as we have, to try to help our elections officials be more knowledgeable about how elections work. And hopefully, that consultant will do the job. But the turnover is absolutely detrimental.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yeah, in the Election Bureau, I think they've had problems for a long time. Doesn't mean you can't solve them, but I, I think the manager would be important. But I think same way I said about 911 and children, youth, I think you have to lean on the experienced people, the people that have been there a while. They're happy there. They know the, you know, election day routine where you have a 17-hour day or an 18-hour day, and they accept that. And both in the primary and the general election. And you have to start with them as to what they, what makes them happy and what, what frustrates them about the position. What are they willing to accept? What are things that they'd rather not accept? And you have to use that to help the people that are rotating much more frequently as far as their retention period of some people is not, not long enough. So I think you have to use the experience to help the inexperienced.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
A lot of my experience in my career has been with technology projects. And so technology projects always have some sort of quality assurance process. And I think that the county manager needs to make sure that there is adequate quality assurance measures in place for the Bureau of Elections to make sure that these elections are running smoothly. And I think the council's job in that is then to make sure that we're holding the right people accountable for what does go wrong. And holding people accountable doesn't mean just firing them, right? It does mean increased training. It does mean making sure that we understand what went wrong and then making sure that we learn from it. And also, it's not just the staff, right? It's also vendor management. There's a lot of vendors that are involved, and we need to make sure that we're holding them accountable as well. And so I really think that holding people accountable and making sure that we have the right processes in place and that we're learning from our mistakes would help.
Candidate Haas?
Absolutely. Can I have like five minutes on this one? This is a big one. Okay. First of all, hats off to the election staff. Again, the rank and file, I support them 100%. Got some ladies, and they've been there for a long time. Thank God they're there in the Elections Bureau. They do a bang-up job. The problem is the politics. And we've seen political hires in my past few years of council, and especially these past couple years. We need to keep the politics out of these managerial positions. Very hard to do, but that was the whole nature of Home Rule Government. We're supposed to divorce that from the day-to-day operations. We have, the Bureau and the Board don't know their lane. They're crossing their roles. We've got an election board who was appointed by council who is laser-focused on the mail-in boxes at the expense of everything else, at the expense of regular elections that are fair, consistent, that are staff with paper. I don't know why we had an eight-month investigation. It's play in his day. You just look at it. We need good leadership in these positions. Everything rises and falls on leadership. I want to support the manager to support our, our lower-level leadership.
Candidate Stevenson?
I absolutely agree. The manager in place plays a very large role in how they, how they operate. Their leadership is to trickle down to that, those staff members who operate in that Election Bureau. It's very hard. People, people run elections, and people make mistakes, right? And although we've seen this time and time and time again, how we decide to hold them accountable is very important, as Michelle has stated, right? I just said to someone the other day, it's either a simple acknowledgement or we're firing someone at the max extreme. You have to have steps in the middle to hold people accountable. There needs to be that leadership and that transparency and integrity in all of the individuals who are operating our elections on a continuous basis.
Candidate Sabatino?
I couldn't agree with candidate Rothenbecker and candidate Stevenson more. But I think Mr. Haas touched on the, the hotbed subject of patronage earlier. And I think having a director of elections who is kind of like a revolving door, you get to leave and run for office and then come back. And in that time, you've lost that, you haven't gained any more institutional knowledge on how to run these elections and how to make sure they are fair, safe, secure, and beneficial to everybody. The Elections Board does have a lane, and the Elections Office does have a lane. I agree with that. But we've never clearly defined what those lanes are. We go back and forth on what state law is and what the charter says, but we really need to clearly define what their lanes are and let them operate within their lanes, and make sure that the rank and file staff actually do have the support from the director of elections that they need to succeed and to make us not the laughingstock of the country every election cycle.
Candidate Velez?
Yes. I know our current county manager is working tirelessly to ensure that there are proper procedures and policies implemented for our elections, that as we move forward, any new hires that will come on will utilize these policies and procedures that have been implemented. I believe that will help mainstream the focus on every election with checkpoints to ensure every point has been taken. Working with the election director and the county manager, county council, I believe we could implement procedures that would help avoid any type of snafu, I'll say, that we may face during an election. I do believe high turnover rate is also an issue. And with those procedures in place, we will be able to retain our employees and continue with ongoing training.
Candidate Mitchell?
Yes, unfortunately, elections have become an overly controversial issue, not just in this county, but across the entire country. Election workers are subjected to weekly threats, death threats, all sorts of issues that really create a gap in experience and, which is the source of many of the problems. Locally, our Bureau and our manager have been working tirelessly to make sure that the issues that have happened over the past couple years do not happen again. They're working on setting up a list of standard operating procedures, and they've hired the former Secretary of State of Pennsylvania as a consultant to make sure that we're complying with all Pennsylvania regulations as regards to voting.
Candidate Urban?
Years ago, I was part of a bipartisan, you know, sub sort of committee on council that we did address a lot of these issues in the past. They were never implemented by the county management at the time. Some of the problems that we have experienced over the last few years is obviously, you know, turnover in the director's position, but also hiring the most qualified individual in that director's position. There were people that actually applied that never There were people that actually applied that never got an interview by the county management. They were turned down before they even got interviewed. So, you know, there are deeper problems that a lot of people don't see, and when you're on council, you see those problems from behind the scenes, and we try to address them. I know there's been individuals that wanted to file right-to-no request to look for... They wanted to look at the resumes of those individuals. And I know one person who was a past county director whom, you know, politically, he and I were not the same party, but did a phenomenal job within this county. And, you know, he is a wealth of knowledge that I think we need to go back to and straighten this county out when it comes to elections.
Our next question will begin with candidate Dombrowski. Regarding your qualifications for the Office of County Councilperson, can you give examples of your effective leadership while working with people with diverse points of view in order to enact policies?
We're in a small business since 1966. My father began, and he passed away in 2017, knew a lot of people in Luzerne County. But with a small business, it's a different game than it is in a county with 15 or employees. It's totally different. But you learn things in a small business that you'll never learn working for Luzerne County or any other county in the United States. You have to wear 1,000 different hats in a small business. You have to be part blue collar, part white collar. You have to be an attorney one day and engineer the next. You have to be a psychologist another day, a friend of somebody, an enemy of another person accidentally. You have to get along with a neighbor, zoning and everything else. You have to wear a lot of hats, and it's not policies we deal with, but we deal with probably 20 people per day almost all year round. So maybe 10,000 people per year in a normal year. So there's nobody more qualified than I as far as seeing different people every day.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
I've had the benefit of working at a larger company in a leadership role and also being a small business owner. And so, in a leadership role in a larger company, I was able to surround myself with people who were really smart. When I took the role, the department was in a little bit of disarray, and we needed to create all of the procedures. And so, everything from the ground up had to be built. And I was able to do a lot of that, but I was also able to surround myself with other people who knew what they were talking about, who could also do that. And I think that's an important part of leadership is not trying to be the smartest person in the room, but making sure you know who the smartest person in the room on every topic is and listening to them. As a small business owner, I've been lucky because now I get the opportunity where it's just me, and I do have to wear a lot of hats and, you know, play a lot of different roles, as candidate Dombrowski said. And so, I think I have both experiences which will help me on council.
Candidate Haas?
I'm married with two kids, so I've got a lot of experience there. The home is a diverse place. But in all seriousness, family dynamics are council dynamics. It's coming together to build consensus to work. I've served on the Board with 10 other people, and we've made it work. 11 comprehensive, diverse opinions. I'm a school teacher as well, so I'm very blessed with what I do every day. I love my job, and I'm corralling and coalescing 25, 30 kids every day to get the job done. So it's all about building consensus, coming together, and just listening. Most of it's just listening. It's these soft skills that I bring to the table, and I'm happy to work with any people at this table that I'm sharing tonight with. Thank you.
Candidate Stevenson?
Yes, like some of the folks here, I am also an educator, so I specialize in differentiated instruction, which means everyone gets what they need in a different way. And I have experience being able to do that at Bloomsburg University for the last eight years of my life. I take cross-cultural approaches to the way we create policy and the way we create rhetoric in our institution, such as building the Black Studies minor from scratch, including the curriculum for three institutions, Mansfield, Lock Haven, and Bloomsburg University. I get to collaborate with administration and hire stakeholders in the system to kind of create these diverse spaces that promote the way that we build our community in all of their diverse forms. Thank you. Anybody want to claim that?
Again, a reminder to please silence or turn off your cell phones.
Well, as many folks up here have said, being a small business owner, you really have to learn how to do many things very quickly and bring a team together of very diverse people to work as a unit to achieve anything. But more importantly than that sometimes is the volunteer work that, you know, people like candidate Velez have talked about. As a board member for In This Together, a community-building organization, and as a very often volunteer who quietly sits in the kitchen and makes mashed potatoes on Thanksgiving Day, you have to learn how to coordinate many things and look at every situation and do it with a happy spirit and do it to the best of your ability and to bring people along with you. You have to win them over. You have to win their respect. You have to earn their respect. And to do that, you need to be an open and a forward leader with people. And don't tell them what to do. Show them what to do by your example and your leadership abilities.
Candidate Velez?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Regarding your qualifications for the Office of County Councilperson, can you give examples of your effective leadership while working with people with diverse points of view in order to enact policies?
Yes. Whether it's through my lived experiences as working in nursing and psychology, most recently as a nonprofit leader, I've had to build teams, and that was through leadership skills that I have been able to obtain throughout my life. Building a nonprofit has been the most difficult task of my entire life. I started from nothing, and I built a small nonprofit that I'm very proud of. I could have not done that without an amazing team of individuals around me. I'm fortunate to have them work alongside me, and I say alongside me because it is not an "I," it is a "we." And that is what a true leader does. True leaders bring the people with them and help them elevate themselves for the betterment of our communities, the betterment of their lives, and that of their families. And that is what I will bring to county council. True, experienced leadership that can help move this county forward.
Candidate Mitchell?
Yes, I'm a strong proponent of bipartisanship, even though council right now has a 10-to-1 majority with Republicans in charge. I do have a good working relationship with our lone Democrat. I don't know if he's still here. He may have left. But Mr. McGinley and I, we work together well, and I work with all my colleagues on council. When it comes to leadership, I'm proud of the record that I've had established over the past year and a half. I know it's not that long, but I think we've done a lot of good things by passing the American Rescue Plan Funding Act, which helped a ton of nonprofits, local municipalities, and infrastructure projects. And that's...I'll stand on that.
Candidate Urban?
Say, being part of county council, none of us can do it alone. We have to collaborate with one another to get a job done. I believe I'm a strong solutions provider. You know, being in IT, you have to bring people together to sometimes resolve some bigger issues that are way beyond yourself. And there's not everything that you can do alone in the field that I work in. I know on the side, you know, it's just like my one other job, I DJ on the side. You have to be able to play a different tune for the crowd that you're playing for and be able to read the crowd. You have to be able to speak their language. You have to be able to entertain them in a way that you're going to keep that crowd focused. Quite honestly, you know, collaborating with other council colleagues is something that I think, you know, we've done well on council. I mean, we may not always agree, but I think all of us have the best interests of Luzerne County, and the way we move it forward might differ, but at the end of the day, we're going to move it forward in a positive manner.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
I'd like to start by saying that leadership matters, and the way that we present ourselves as leaders has a large effect on the way that the people that we work with react to us and live their own lives. Working on so many nonprofit boards, I work with differing viewpoints on a daily basis, but that has made me able to surround myself with people with different strengths from myself and different strengths from each other. I've learned to be able to listen to those with different strengths, and I've also learned to hire people who have different strengths than I in particular to make sure that that organization has the best team it possibly can have, that I've built the best team that that organization can possibly have with those differing viewpoints and those differing strengths. A very specific example of a leadership ability that I've shown is a few years ago, Kiss Children's Theater was evicted from the mall. I was in a leadership position on that board when that happened, and I was able to raise a million dollars to build that new theater with that team.
This next question will begin with candidate Rothenbecker. What is your opinion about county borrowing?
I think that's an interesting question to think about because we have a county that is in a lot of debt. And so, I think a lot of the county council members have already talked about the debt that we're still repaying and that it will be paid off in, you know, approximately seven years. I think that we need to be hesitant to jump right to borrowing money first. I think that candidate Haas said before that there's a lot of state and federal money out there, and I do think that we need to seek out grants whenever possible because anything that we borrow is going to come back to the taxpayers, and we can't continue to pass all tax burden on to the taxpayers. So we need to make sure that we're working with state and federal authorities to get grant money as a first step.
Candidate Haas?
Borrowing bad. That's how I feel about that. That got us into almost a half a billion-dollar debacle that we're still clawing our way out of. The Commissioner former government used tomorrow's funds to pay today's bills and then just pass the buck. And we had to make some heart-wrenching decisions in 10 years on council, and a lot of you in this room have paid attention to that. It was very difficult. So I would prefer not to take that approach. Obviously, you've got to keep the lights on. So if it comes to that, yeah, we're going to have to borrow. We managed to pay down this debt because this council was very reluctant to borrow. That's how you pay down the debt. You can't take on more money. We did it one time with the 911 upgrade. That's the only significant borrow we've done in my time on council in 10 years. So we just have to keep on coming together. 11 members in that civil dialogue we were talking about just to make it work. Thank you.
Candidate Stevenson?
I agree. Borrowing at this state where we are is a negative. We cannot afford it. Moving forward, yes, we should be finding innovative ways to receive funding and grant opportunities from other means. We have not extended the research to support the county yet. Give us the opportunity to do that. Let the new candidates step in and find new ways to build us up and build that budget so we are no longer in the position to keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing. You all have student loans, I'm pretty sure. You know how it goes. We can't afford to keep doing that, right? We could barely pay it now for our individual lives. As a county, we cannot afford to keep borrowing, period.
Candidate Sabatino?
Well, I will echo what everyone has said already. Borrowing is bad. We need new and innovative ways to bring money into the county, starting out with grants like candidate Rothenbecker said. But we have a lot of county...like, the county has gathered a lot of properties over the years that need to be sold. We get a one-time windfall from the sale of those properties, but then we get a tax stream from them, a continuous revenue stream. I think another thing that we can look at is maybe looking at the LERTA situation, and instead of granting these big corporations tax abatements for years on new improvements on their properties, we should maybe look and see if we can afford to do that. And what...but more importantly, we need to look and see what these businesses are going to bring into the community to benefit us and what we're giving up with that tax revenue and what we're gaining by doing those levels.
Candidate Velez?
Yes. For the last 18 months, I have been working with local officials, whether they're mayors or council, as well as state representatives, to find solutions that we could bring into Luzerne County that would help us be proactive with our fiscal responsibility to avoid tax increases and to also prevent any possible borrowing on a county level. There's several funding sources that we could bring in to Luzerne County where we could partner with private nonprofit municipalities as well as county at large that would help us avoid any need to borrow as well as prevent any future tax increases. And I would love to further those conversations once I'm elected as your county councilwoman.
Candidate Mitchell?
Yes, borrowing is always a last resort. This council and previous councils are very aware of the past financial issues we've had in regards to the debt, and they've done an excellent job of paying down that debt while avoiding to take on any new expenses. One of our major issues we have right now is the county prison, which we'd all love to go out and borrow half a billion dollars, but we know we just can't do that right now. So we've also received...our bond rating was also upgraded to an A. It was just a...when we started a home role, I believe it was...we had no bond rating, and we weren't even able to borrow. So slowly, we've been improving the county's financial health, but as long as we have this debt on our table, we're not going to be able to borrow anymore.
Candidate Urban?
A true fiscal conservative has to remind people that grants come from either federal sources or state sources. It's still taxpayers' money. I'm a federal taxpayer. I'm a state taxpayer. I'm a local taxpayer, residential taxpayer, you know, both on a county level, municipal level, pay a right-to-work tax. I mean, you look at all of your bills, and you're full of taxes and fees to support government. I mean, I would go bigger and bolder. Let's reduce the size of government overall in totality. Let's ask the state reps to go and put a constitutional amendment on the ballot to reduce their size at the state legislature. You know, let's consolidate services. Let's regionalize maybe police forces. Let's consolidate the 12 school districts in this county. You go to other states like New Jersey, you have one county government, you pay one tax bill, you know, and you really get all those services inclusive. Here, it's parsed out in so many different ways, people have their head spinning. You know, I look at it in a sense that it's very convoluted, and we need to consolidate.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
One of my top priorities is that we are fiscally responsible and fiscally solvent in this county, and borrowing has to be a break-glass in case of absolute emergency situation. It's not a good idea. We've seen horrible things happen in the past. And so, the first step, which I have been doing for the last year and a half, is to start talking to our state electives and our federal electives and join with them and get some federal funding, get state funding into this county so that this county can succeed because this county is what the county council is here to protect. We also need to reassess LERTAs and really, truly think about them and whether or not we're going to gain from them. We also need to, as candidate Sabatino said, get properties back on the tax rolls so that we can bring in that kind of money as well. But to the direct question, are you for borrowing? What's your opinion on county borrowing? No.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, yeah, most people don't understand how strong we are financially right now. It doesn't mean we should borrow. I'm saying, just making a statement, we're 1 to 1 next year at the end of 2024. We're 1 to 1 on income, on debt to income. Very few counties in this country will ever be able to match that. You look at the United States, we're 164 to 164 or about next year, at the end of next year. In Luzerne County, the United States, it's eight times worse, 800% worse. It's 31 trillion in debt, 4 trillion in income. You take 31 divided by 4, it's almost 8. So that's a complete and total disaster in the United States financially. Luzerne County is just the opposite. We're doing very well. We're very strong. But you still don't borrow just for the sake of borrowing. But we can borrow if we have to, as Harry said, to keep the lights on if such a thing occurred. But the next big expense will be a potential new prison. And of course, you don't borrow to build something, a palace, for people who are locked up. That just doesn't make any sense.
The next question will begin with candidate Haas. We've heard mentioned tonight a little bit about the county manager. This is a critical responsibility of council. What are the most important criteria for choosing the county manager and division heads?
The most important criterion for the manager is to carry out the will of the elected council. And in my time, we've had some pretty good managers. I've worked with three managers. And they were by and large okay, with some flaws. We had some bumps in the road. But we've got to understand that this is a government by the people, for the people, and that's what we're elected to do. So we have to make sure that we are transmitting the will of the people to the county manager. Now, what that also means is that the manager has to have the leeway and the freedom to manage. We want to keep the politics out of the day-to-day operations. That's the nature of the government. So when looking for a manager, that's what I would look. I hope we don't have to do that soon. I'm wishing our current manager the absolute best. I've worked with Ms. Crocomo before, and I'm very happy to perhaps get the opportunity again. Thank you.
Candidate Stevenson?
Yes, I think one of the important things we want in a manager is that nonpartisanship so we can operate without bias. I also believe that having that experience coming into that position is very important. That should definitely be taken into consideration. But also their local knowledge of how we've been operating for the last however many years. That's extremely important. We need to make sure that that manager, right, and those officials operating are doing the work and the duties and responsibilities to the full extent of their job description.
Candidate Sabatino?
Well, I think the new county manager, or relatively new county manager, is the right person for the job. I think institutional knowledge is probably one of the most important things we have going for us right now with county manager Crocomo. She's a very diligent person, and I think those are some of the better qualities that we need in our county management. We need somebody who's detail oriented, very diligent, keeps track of everything that's going on, and keeps the finger on the pulse of how the government is running. And to go outside of the county to find somebody who doesn't know anything about Luzerne County was a mistake that the council eventually rectified. And I think that they've done a great job with getting somebody who understands what we need and how we need to do things. So that institutional knowledge is probably number one on the list of what I would look for. Thank you.
Candidate Velez?
I agree with candidate Sabatino. Institutional knowledge is key, not only for the county manager, but for every department head, as well as every county employee. I believe our current county manager is doing a phenomenal job. She's reining in on county employees. She's working on time management. She's working on budget. She's working on policy and reform. She's trying to implement effective procedures. That is what you look for in a county manager. She has every qualification needed to do the job and do the job right and make sure it gets done. I have all confidence in the county manager, and I would love to be a part of the conversations regarding any new hires for department heads as well as county personnel to ensure that those scopes of job description fall in line with the resumes that we are given to effectively make sure that we're hiring the right people. And I believe that's being done under our current county manager.
Candidate Mitchell?
I believe that keeping open communication channels with council and transparency are the major responsibilities for the county manager, which Ms. Crocomo is doing an excellent job. She gives council weekly updates, keeps us in the loop on any major issue that pops up. Council's always in the know through email. She'll meet with any of us one-on-one whenever we ask. She'll make time for us. She's very responsive to council inquiries, and that's what I really look for in a manager. She takes input well, and I think we have the right person for the job right now. She really wants the job. She knows the issues that we have in the county. She knows the direction to take, the kind of people to put in positions that will really make this county a much better place to live in.
Candidate Urban?
I can say wholeheartedly, I mean, I didn't support the county manager in the beginning. I've grown to actually like her as far as a county manager. She's been very open with communications. I've had one-on-ones with her numerous times. At the end of the day, the council is a board of, basically a board of directors. We are there to hear you as the individuals and taxpayers and residents of Luzerne County and take your issues back to our board and vote on them, whether they be in a resolution form or ordinance form. And then the county manager is responsible to execute those policies, those laws, those procedures that we put either in the admin code or personnel code. So really, the people drive the direction of the county. We are there to take the vote as far as your direction and then, and make it solid. And then the manager is there to execute that. And if they do a poor job, then they'll be rated, you know, as such, or, you know, also provided with great comments.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
Can you repeat the question, please? I think we've gotten a little bit away from what the actual question was.
Tonight, we mentioned the county manager. This is a critical responsibility of council. What are the most important criteria for choosing the county manager and division heads?
Leadership abilities. The county manager and the county division heads hold turnover and that institutional knowledge in their hands. When a manager or a county division head creates a positive workplace with servant leadership, the potential to change the county positively is everything. And it has the potential to change. When we have those leadership abilities in the county manager, as well as the division heads, we have the chance to change everything for the better about the way the county runs. When your employees trust that their employers care about them and their wants and their needs and trust that their employers want them there, all services, all functions increase in effectiveness. And with that kind of leadership in the county for managers and division heads, we could see that happen in the county. We just have to hold them accountable.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, I think for choosing a county manager or division heads, I think institutional knowledge, as Mr. Sabatino said, was, it'd be very important. But there's so many clauses, probably 20 or 25, and you're never going to get every single one. But, you know, finance would be another one. A people person's another one. Mr. Robertson was a great people person. He just, you know, he really should have said at the front, at the start, you know, it might be a six-month stay and just been straight with people. But transparency, that's where I mentioned transparency. He really should have said that. And toughness when you need it. I mean, you know, I did like Mr. Swets. I thought he had all the qualities. Tall fellow, too. I mean, sometimes that really helps, just being tall. If you're trying to direct a lot of people, you know, 39 department heads, you're tall and you're talking to someone. You know, most times they're going to listen if you're taller than them, you know. And, but I'm just saying that comes into play. But I have to admit, Ms. Crocomo at this point is, she's shown a lot of toughness and she's trying her heart out. I got to give her credit. You know, she's playing a better game today than she was as an acting manager in my opinion.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
I think part of county council's job is to determine a vision for the county along with the voters. And then I think that their job is to hire a transformational leader in the county manager who helps rally the entire county government around that vision and helps build that. And part of that is creating an environment where people feel safe, where people feel that they can be innovative, they can disagree, and building a strong culture and advocating for their team. I don't know county manager Crocomo personally, but I did read in the paper this morning that she is a fiery advocate for her team and her staff. And so I think that's a great part of transformational leadership to make sure that she, her staff feels that they can disagree with council and that they can bring innovative ideas to the table.
This next question will begin with candidate Stevenson. What is your position on the county council's June 2022 resolution to ask the state legislature to eliminate mail-in ballots?
I'm absolutely opposed. I support mail-in ballots. I support drop boxes. Any opportunity to get people to participate in democracy should be available. I think that a lot of the time, it's the privilege that we have as able-bodied individuals that blocks us from being able to agree with mail-in ballots or agree with drop boxes. Not everybody can walk or drive or get to our polling places, right? Not everybody's capable, right? What if I have to spend $20 to, you know, go 16 streets to a polling place that I already can't afford just to be able to have my voice heard? So I'm in complete support for mail-in ballots, drop boxes, all of that, absolutely.
Candidate Sabatino?
Well, I 100% agree with Ms. Stevenson. I think that the ordinance should have been asking our state legislature to do early in-person voting and giving the opportunity to people who do want to still vote in person, to an expanded time period to vote. I think an early in-person voting period would go a long way to help ease some of our election problems. We could have one voting location open in each municipality, and that would be, serve as a training ground for the big day. We would find out earlier if we need paper. We would have people trained, ready to go. I think that early in-person voting is, along with drop boxes and mail balloting, will engage more people in the democratic process. And that is what we're all here for. And what you guys are all here to do is engage in the democratic process.
Candidate Velez?
I disagreed with the resolution put forth by county council in June of 2023. I absolutely support mail-in ballots as well as drop boxes. It opens up the opportunity for every voter's voice to be heard. I know personally, I have heard from countless members of our communities who are disabled or homebound, and they are unable to physically vote in person. And they applaud the effort and the incentives that have been afforded to them to mail, utilize a mail-in ballot, and then have someone appropriate the correct form that allows them to drop that mail-in ballot or for them at a secure and safe drop box. So, no, I did not support that resolution, but I do support the mail-in ballots, yes.
Candidate Mitchell?
I do not see enough evidence in this county to call for eliminating drop boxes. I voted against that ordinance due to that fact. I like voting in person. I think always vote in person, but I'm able to. Some people are not able to, if it's more convenient for them, especially elderly or disabled people. And they're very happy. It's become a very popular thing, mail-in voting and using a drop box. And I haven't seen enough evidence of fraud or anything to that effect to call for the elimination of either.
Candidate Urban?
As far as mail-in ballots, and we've always had a process called the absentee system. And then adding another layer of mail-in ballots is convoluting the entire process at a state level. The state reps really have not sanctioned drop boxes in statutory law. And that's factual. The Supreme Court of Pennsylvania says drop boxes can be utilized, but they're not utilized across the entire Commonwealth in a consistent manner. If you want to have free and fair elections, election law needs to be applied equally and fairly across all 67 counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, just like drop boxes. If we're going to have drop boxes in Luzerne County, then maybe all 76 municipalities should have one, not just a select few municipalities. So let's look at this from a big picture perspective. And also, in order to have all these, you know, on early voting, you're going to have to go out and find the people, which we don't have right now, to volunteer at those polls, to work them for a week or two weeks or whatever time period you want election season to be.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
The most important part of a democracy is an educated electorate. And we want those people, we want everyone to engage with our democracy. I absolutely oppose this measure by the council. Mail-in balloting is safe and effective, and that's important because it's true. There is simply not evidence to show that it is not. There is not enough evidence to show that there is any fraud with mail balloting such that we should not be keeping it or drop boxes. Policymakers often do come from able-bodied perspectives or from a job that allows them to take off to vote in person. We are a diverse country. We are a diverse county. That county council's job is to make sure that those diverse needs are met. And cutting mail-in balloting and removing drop boxes are unequivocally disregarding those needs.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, I think that was ridiculous for county council to ask state legislator on either of those two fronts to eliminate mail-in ballots or drop box. That was almost a comedy act because there are very legitimate reasons. Elderly people, for one example, that would be able to use one or the other of those. People have health conditions. And when we had COVID-19, which was, you know, going around like only in the last three to four years or so, I mean, many people just wanted to avoid that scenario of waiting in line in maybe a very heavily populated voting area in Wilkes-Barre, that sort of thing, with 60 other people or something. And you just didn't want to do it, you know? So I mean, you have to give them that option. Some people legitimately need it, and some people choose it. To try to shortchange either of those two groups is really, it's almost comical that somebody would even bring that up.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
In 2021, my mother was undergoing chemotherapy, and she needed to vote by mail because we were still in a pandemic, and she did not want to become infected. And I voted by mail because then I was able to make sure that I could take care of her properly. I was her caretaker, make sure she got to her chemotherapy appointment. And so that wouldn't have qualified for an absentee ballot. I would not have qualified under that law. And I was able to get a mail-in ballot. I think it's an important thing, not just for our aging population, but also for accessibility purposes, for people with disability and people with those circumstances. And I think that it's a distraction tactic to focus on mail-in ballots instead of focusing on things like who's going to order the paper for our elections. We need to focus on what's important instead of making up problems.
Candidate Haas?
Speaking of creating problems that didn't exist, that's what happened with the mail-in balloting. When this went through the governor's office, this created problems we didn't have. We already had absentee balloting. So we've seen every election cycle, there's been a big struggle over this issue. The board is fighting about it all the time. The bureau has a hard time carrying it out. I was in the opposite. I dropped off my campaign paperwork. There was an elderly couple. He was 89. She was 83. They had, this is the third time they had their mail-in ballot they submitted. It bounced back. There are holes in the system. My bear concern, even just with that, in America, democracy doesn't come free. It doesn't come cheap. You have to invest in it. You have to have candidate forums like this. I bet quite a few have already voted in here. A lot of you might have already made up your mind. But tonight, maybe we changed your mind. And this is what happens with mail-in balloting. It robs us of that participation, and it allows people with bigger, deeper pockets to thwart elections. I'm against it.
The last question will begin with candidate Sabatino. Luzerne County has 76 municipalities, including four cities, 36 boroughs, and 36 townships. How can the council stay informed about the needs of all the municipalities they represent?
Well, this is something that I've been advocating for since I've been running in two different cycles, 21 and 23 now. I think the county council should get out of their chambers and go into the county. We need to bring back meetings around the county so that different people who don't normally get to go to these meetings or attend via Zoom get to go and experience what the meetings actually are and get to voice their opinions in person to their county council members. That is a crucial, crucial thing that I think the county council doesn't do right now. They hole up in their chamber and just decide things without going to the people and being accessible to the people. So we are a big county. It's the size of Rhode Island. I've been all over. I've visited all 76 municipalities, even New Columbus, which kind of is just a road with a couple houses on it. And I think it's important that every voice gets heard. And to be out and amongst the people is the number one way we can do that.
Candidate Velez?
Yes. Since I have been on the campaign trail, I have sat down with varying councils and mayors throughout Luzerne County. And there is a unanimous sentiment that they would love to hold a roundtable with county council. So county council can hear the concerns of their constituents, and we can collaborate on best methods that would help not only their municipalities make progress and move forward, that would best serve their constituents, but a county as a whole. Because when one does well, we all do well. And that is the point of county council, to make sure that we're And that is the point of county council, to make sure that we're all doing well. And I welcome the opportunity to implement such a roundtable with our local council members so we can have those very important conversations.
Candidate Mitchell?
Keeping the lines of communication open with municipal representatives is key to the success of the entire county. I know any of us on council would be happy to visit any municipal meeting across the entire county. I think we're all pretty accessible. We provide plenty of opportunities for input. We could even talk about creating a subcommittee of council representatives, township supervisors that can coordinate operations and ask questions of council. I've been thinking about that for just a short while, but those are just a few ideas that we have.
Candidate Urban?
So part of our job, too, is part-time. I mean, some of us, or many of us have a full-time job, so we are, you know, we try to be as accessible as often as we can. I know I keep late-night hours. Anybody can ring my phone at any time, day or night. Chances are, I might answer at 3:00 in the morning. But quite honestly, to have meetings all over the county, we can do that. I mean, it is a responsibility of the chair to set those meetings and the agenda, of course. You know, we can have some influence over that. I know when I was first on council, we had some meetings in the southern end of the county, and it was very beneficial. You got to hear from those individuals. Realize, too, that we appoint people on authorities, boards, and commissions who have a responsibility as well. You know, there's a redevelopment authority that reaches out to different municipalities for different development projects. Our zoning office, you know, takes care of over 20 municipalities, and some of those issues come to us as well. So we're already engaged in various ways in our county. Just people have to know the entire structure is very complex.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
This is an issue that many of us have spoken about and that I think is very important. I agree with candidate Sabatino. County council should get out of their chambers and visit the rest of the county, hold different meetings in different places so that people who have not been able to go to county council meetings or don't have the ability to access them via Zoom can actually come and talk to their council members, the people that they voted into office, so that those people can see them, can hear them, can meet with us. That is so important in a democracy, to be able to speak to and access your elected leaders. We also absolutely need more communication between the boroughs and the township. We should be having more roundtables, and we should be collaborating more. Because I agree with candidate Velez, we want all of us to do well, and that means every single part of this county.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, I think that Luzerne County can certainly think about keeping in touch with these 76 communities, but we don't, Luzerne County government does not own the 76 communities. You have to keep that in mind. Each have their own mayor, each have their own town council. And with people that are elected already, we can't just take over, you know, like it's a dictatorship of some type. You can't do that. So you can consider having maybe town halls, you know, in different parts of the county too, but you have to be realistic about it, and it has to all be arranged and sorted through so that some sort of equal amount of people you're speaking to in each case, you know, four communities per meeting or something like that, you know? Where it doesn't take 76 different town halls, it might take 15 or 20, you know? But that's possible. But I'm just saying, but Luzerne County, above all, does not own those communities.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
I think that the other candidates have had a lot of really great ideas as it pertains to this issue. So meetings, having meetings around the county, taking part in roundtables, and other tools, you know, maybe there's modernization and digital tools that people can use to work with elected officials in different areas. But I think that one thing that has to happen for sure is better educating people on how to get involved with the government. And I don't know if this is really a shortcoming of Luzerne County. I think this is something that is a nationwide problem, is that people don't always know that they have access to get involved with the government. And I think that if we can have the county government get involved in letting people know how to, you know, influence decisions, how to speak their minds, how to send emails or statements, how to call in, I think that would be an important step to making sure that everybody has better access to the government.
Candidate Haas?
Yes, ma'am. So I, back in the day, we did make the rounds, like I think was already said, to different townships and municipalities around the county, we met, and it was a fantastic idea. I'd love to see that again. Going back to those Koz's that I want to talk about real quick, too, that these Keystone Opportunity Zones are zones that it's essentially a form of corporate welfare, that we take tax dollars, we give tax abatements for 10 years, and the corporation turns around and makes a lot of money. I see the development side of it. But our county has had a real love affair with these Koz's. And a point of success, when the original question was, what have you done to, I don't know, some success story or dialogue with other people? I guess it was when we had one group that came in, and they won a 10-year tax abatement, and they said, why don't we negotiate? Why don't we have some kind of incremental approach, like the form of ALERTA? And sure enough, we were able to save about $500,000 just on year one of rolling back 100% Koz Opportunity Zone to ALERTA. And that's the kind of thing we need. We need people that aren't afraid to negotiate, not afraid to be firm, because that's how we get things done. Thank you.
Candidate Stevenson?
I would say anyone that knows me knows that I am a huge fan of being in the streets. I love being on the ground. I love being able to talk to constituents, and being able to provide them with the accurate education to participate in this process is huge. Colleagues here have made great examples and in great ways that we can get more and more people to feel like their voices can be heard participating in this process. It all depends on how we want to do that. Urban said, yes, this is a part-time job. Sure it is, right? But in that part-time, how do you plan to communicate with your community members? How do you plan to operate with your neighbors and work with officials to make sure the needs and resources are being met across the board? Yes, let's create roundtables. Let's build conversation. I'm in complete support of creating electronical means. Like right now, our Luzerne County website is not necessarily accessible. It could function way better, right? People would be able to submit comments and questions and receive that education from multiple means if necessary.
On a personal note, as a communications professor, a working website is crucial, so I ask for your consideration.
That's in the process. Or we're working on that.
We're now going to be moving into our closing statement, and we will begin with candidate Velez.
I humbly ask for your vote on November 7. As I stated earlier, my reason for running for Luzerne County Council is not self-serving. I have proven my leadership capabilities. I have proven my ability to implement and execute crucial programs that have helped elevate countless families here in Luzerne County. I would love the opportunity to bring those skills to the county council table to ensure every resident, every small business here in Luzerne County has the resources they need to thrive and progress and elevate this county from the status that it currently faces. Thank you.
Candidate Mitchell?
Thank to the League for hosting this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the voters. I humbly, I also ask for your vote on November 7, or if you haven't voted already, plan to vote by mail. I really am, I've enjoyed my time on council. I hope I can serve another four years. I think I've made a pretty decent impact to improve the quality of life of our county residents. I've worked well with my colleagues on council. I'm not afraid to work with someone I disagree with. I think a lot of us on council know that, and we all want what's best for the county. I've lived here my entire life. I plan to live here the rest of my life, and I'd like to work to continue to make Luzerne County a great place to live.
Candidate Urban?
Once again, I am Stephen J. Urban, like to humbly ask for your vote, support on November 7. I think, you know, you need somebody with sometimes an alternative view. It can't always be a unanimous decision, 11 to 0 on every vote. You have to have people that could see various aspects and other variables within county government, people that have experience, which I have. You need somebody that's firm. I am still fun, even though I might be very firm on council with my views. It's all about people and the residents and building us up as a county, about creating that economic environment where people can work, live, and play here. You want the working wages? They are going up. They have gone up since a lot of the warehousing businesses come into Luzerne County. It is a balancing act when it comes to a budget. You know, you have a household budget, and we have a county budget. We need to be aligned together as the people and as, you know, the people up here that are in the politics end of it, you know, and the people consensus-building end of it. So I ask for your support on November 7. Thank you.
Candidate Bryn Smith?
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting. Thank you to Dr. Mellon for moderating. Thank you to the Community College for hosting, and thank you for coming and listening to this important debate. This is how we are able to have an educated electorate so that they can engage in this democracy. I ask for your vote this November because I understand what's at stake. Every single family in Luzerne County is at stake. Our livelihoods are at stake. Our financial ability is at stake. Our ability to put food on the table is at stake. Our democracy is at stake in this election, and I understand that, and I want Luzerne County to be better. I believe that working for the county for so long gave me a very unique perspective, and I know that the county needs to have more efficiency, more accountability, and more transparency. And because I have that perspective, I'll be ready to work for you on day one.
Candidate Dombrowski?
Yes, Luzerne County is a huge place, has 326,000 people, and with all due respect to Mr. Sabatino, it's actually 75%. The size of Rhode Island, 906 square miles to 1,214, and everybody knew, of course, that I would bring that up. But it's exactly at 75%, believe it or not. It's incredible, but that's the smallest U.S. state we're comparing to. So I'm saying that, you know, it does technically take a special person to be able to handle something like that, and it's, in the end, the 11 county council members are effectively and collectively, they are, in fact, the boss. When they meet in executive session, somebody's probably in trouble, you know? You know, it's talking about personnel management, they're talking to the manager about someone else. They won't say what they're talking about, but, you know, you have to wear all the hats, and I think I can do that, and I have to applaud the other participants today. I think everybody did pretty good, but I ask for your vote as well on November 7. Thank you.
Candidate Rothenbecker?
I'd like to thank Dr. Mellon for moderating, thank Luzerne County Community College for having us, and thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, which I think was really informative for me, so I hope that everyone in the audience found it informative as well. Mostly, I'd like to thank the audience, for those of you who've counted, or who are counting, you've been listening to us for 2 hours and 4 minutes. But thank you so much for coming here to be informed voters. And I have been endorsed by many labor unions. I've been endorsed by many organizations that recognize my commitment to our environment here in Luzerne County. And I also have been endorsed by many people in my life who know who I am and what I will do. I'm ready to work hard, and so I ask for you to please vote for me on November 7.
Candidate Haas?
Hey, thank you, ladies, again, for all your hard work. I know it takes a lot to put this on for the League members that are here in attendance. We really appreciate it. This is an important part of our republican democracy that we have. And my name's Harry Haas. I also ask for your vote, if you haven't already cast one. You all received some mail about me in the, over the past couple weeks, and maybe tonight the conversation changed your mind. Because, again, as we go through this trajectory, there's more big money, more institutional power, more concentrated power in our country. And the great thing about local government is it's very local, and we're here to solve problems. So, you know, Michelle, it was really nice to meet you tonight. I know you before, and Brittany, too. I think I met everybody else, but these are the newbies, so perhaps we'll see you at the table in a couple of weeks. And really, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Everybody at home who's going to be watching this on Scott's video, we really appreciate you. Thanks for having me.
Candidate Stevenson?
I want to thank the moderator. You were fabulous. And the League of Women Voters, thank you so much for creating a space for us to be able to have these conversations. Thank you, LCC, CCC, CC. And thank you to the audience for coming out and just being able to participate and take the time out of your lives to hear us and to actually get to know the people who are going to be representing you in the next couple of weeks. I'm going to ask you for three things. One, try something different. Two, you can vote for me on November 7. And three, make a choice to make history with me. I'm running a very historic campaign, and I would love your support getting through the finish line. So please, decide to be a part of that journey. Thank you.
Candidate Sabatino?
Thank you all so much. Dr. Mellon, you were great. The League of Women Voters, as always, has pulled it off again. The college for hosting us. But mostly, I'd like to take a minute to thank my family. I would not be the person I am today without their love and support. And I really appreciate the fact that they're allowing me to go on this journey, like Brittany said. So thanks for indulging me on that one second. I also ask for you to vote for me on November 7, if you haven't already. I feel like we all bring something unique to this table, and we all offer something that is going to move this county forward. But we need the right people to move this county forward, and I feel like I'm one of those people. And I would really, really be honored if you voted for me on November 7. Thank you.
For my part, I'd like to thank all the candidates, and know that tonight I will be saying your names in my sleep.
Thank you, candidates, on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Many thanks to LCC, especially Susan Spry and Ryan Dunsmear, the gentlemen that you saw running all over the place during our, and keeping us going. He's a two-time graduate of LCC, and we appreciate your expertise. Thank you, Dr. Mellon, again. Much appreciated. And also, thank you for all the League Board, all of us volunteers who are working this event tonight, and there are many of us working tonight. So thank you so much, all of you. This forum will be broadcast on Service Electric Television, Channel 9, at 8:00 PM Monday, October 30, and the Luzerne County Government Programming YouTube channel on Tuesday, October 31. A link to that video will be posted on our League website. Everyone, remember to vote either by mail or in person. And please consider joining the League, a nonpartisan organization. Membership is open across genders as the League works to educate the community about voting and the democratic process. Good night, everybody.